This committee is behold to order. First thing on the agenda is termination of existing Otto Miller Athletic Park agreement.
I shouldn't have said agreements. Sorry. I pass out the current letter of understanding with Hortonville U Sports and the current Otto Miller Athletic Park agreement with Hortonville Area School District. If you notice, the letter of understanding with Hortonville U Sports basically expired February 5th of last year and the agreement with Otto Miller Athletic Park with Hortonville Area School District expired May 31st of this year. So instead of rolling these forward, I'm recommending that we terminate these agreements and work on new agreements. That will be item number two in the agenda.
What does it entail? What's the new agreement?
Well, we have to work through that.
Do you have any ideas?
Well, a new agreement?
Yeah.
Well, we need to make them so they're actually beneficial to all parties.
So, so it'll basically be structured the way it is now? Somewhat? Or not at all?
On what you've already discussed in number two in here.
These are technically expired, if I just want to make it official.
So we need a motion to recommend the full board to terminate these?
Also move.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Faced. Okay, I'll be recommended the board to terminate these agreements. So now we can go to the next discussion of future agreements.
That's where we need to figure out what's best for us, what's best for U Sports and how the school district plays into all this. There were some concerns that U Sports might not get to do some of the things that they do now if we would have sold it to the school. The property or rented it to them and they, after talking with the DNR, we could never sell that property to the school district. Where only options were to lease it to the school district. What Public Works is looking for is for someone, there's always been a bit of a different perspective from the school district. They feel $10,000 is way too much. We get prodded and neebled about that all the time. $10,000 is nothing when it comes to taking care of that field all year long. What I'm looking for is either more responsibility out of them or more responsibility out of U Sports on maintaining the fields. The cost is just getting a little bit too much for Public Works to subsidize anybody.
So what does it cost us to maintain it?
Thirty or fifty thousand a year.
Oh, wow. And they're paying ten?
Yeah. We have to take care of it year round.
Is ten just the least? Because you know, when I read this over, I don't see anything that says we have to take care of these fields according to WIAA standards.
No, I don't either.
And not only that, do you know how many communities are in the Hortonville School District, but yet the maintenance on that field is going on village residents taxes? There are eight communities in Hortonville Area School District. They should be maintaining it and every single person in the Hortonville Area School District should be paying taxes on it.
Yeah.
Not the village residents.
Well, that's one of the discussions that Carl and I had. Rather than saying, okay, they pay like forty or fifty a year for it, to make an agreement where during the period they use it, they maintain it and also with U Sports when they use, you know, they maintain it during their time.
And Hortonville U Sports did-
Rather than actually have to pay money for it to-
Is there overlap though? Hortonville U Sports did express that they would do whatever they need to do.
Yeah, yeah. And again, we're gonna do whatever it takes to make sure they have all-
What you're saying, Jeannie, and I would agree with you, is that the $10,000 is just a lease?
Yes.
So what you're proposing or what I hear you say is lease it for $10,000 but let them maintain it.
Yes, at least.
It's our property.
$10,000 is cheap. When I look at all the, when I look at all the different articles in the newspaper about how the school spends their money on their different fields, they spend millions of dollars over in the football field. They spend thousands of dollars in the soccer field. So I feel that they should also be maintaining the baseball diamonds that they lease.
Yeah, my question is though, doing that is, can we put some kind of stipulation on there that Hortonville U Sports gets first dibs at scheduling? Or that, I guess my fear is if they lease it, is Hortonville U Sports gonna still be able to do theirs?
Well, I think we can mandate that, yeah. That would be expected. We would want Hortonville U Sports to basically manage the concessions. They would continue to do that if I'm not-
Correct.
They would handle the scheduling, not so much for the high school, but they would work their schedule around the high school and then handle scheduling from that point forward.
Have there been conflicts in the past with school and U Sports as far as scheduling?
Not really. Not really. Not, nothing major.
Opening day, they had a WIAA game in the morning and it backed up everything on the day of U Sports. But that's because we had a horrible spring.
Right, right.
And they had to get that game in.
Are you here from Hortonville U Sports?
Yes.
Okay, so my question is, have you spoken to the school district at all about any potential? Because I'm under the impression that there's been, that there was some discussion, but then I'm told there wasn't some discussion. So I just wanna know, I mean, has, has there been any kind of open dialogue between the school district and Hortonville U Sports? So what I've read is inaccurate. I just wanna make sure because I'm getting, I'm getting different stories and I just wanna make sure that we're not setting, we're not setting any conflict up in the future. I just-
No, I think there was some discussion mentioned to us about things that were decided that we didn't know about and then, you know, it came about that it wasn't decided that way. So then, since that happened, there hasn't been discussion with us because you guys mean, you guys are gonna maintain the park. So I guess our discussion is more with you guys.
I just don't wanna step on any toes, is that's what I'm worried about. Because we got, I got a copy of an email that was sent up by Hortonville U Sports, then I got a letter that was read to us at our last board meeting, which completely is opposite of what I think really happened. And I just wanna make sure that we're not stepping on any toes. Okay.
Well, we were given in early June, Craig was, received a phone call and basically said, "Park is sold."
And that, yeah, we can't-
That's the information we went off of. So that's where we went forward, so.
Okay, and I, I get it. Sometimes, I just wanna make sure that we're not stepping on any toes of discussions that might have happened.
No, and we're fully, what we've been doing for the past few years is we work with the school. There's basically one, one main schedule for HYS, work with the school. We work around what their games are. The only major conflict we had was opening day this year and we worked that out and, you know.
Is this something, and Bob's not here right now, is this something that if we're entering into an agreement with the school district, obviously Bob would need to check that all over, but we need to make sure that we're covered, you know. I guess my fear is if they're leasing it, is there limited alcohol? Because I know that that was a big discussion too with-
I don't think leasing would affect the alcohol, but we might wanna compromise and say you can't have alcohol till after the last school district game is done.
Okay, I mean, that's, that's what, that's another question. When I've been contacted, people are asking me about alcohol and I just think that's-
And if we're leasing it, I don't think we should lease it for two months. We should lease it for the year. And the school district is, I mean, Hortonville U Sports gets to use it after June 1st or something like that, or earlier if they can arrange a schedule.
Isn't your open only in May, isn't it?
Yeah, it's the second weekend in May, or third weekend in May. Yeah, so the alcohol thing would affect us there and then we also start using the-
I know we talk about the alcohol thing a lot, but if you're not, see, right now, last year and this year, for that agreement you have with the village, you're supposed to give the village $4,500 a year, which you did do for the last two years. I know you spent a lot of money, I'm not, I let, I let, I didn't say last, but we all, they spent like a ton of money up there a couple of years ago. So it wasn't a new deal. But you won't need to raise that kind of money to pay us the $4,500 if you're getting it.
Right, and we're gonna, we probably need to see that because what I have is $2,500 in the agreement I have. So if there's something else written, then I need to know. Because I'm the treasurer for HYS, so.
No, $4,000. Yeah, $4,000, it's right there in there.
Okay, that must be something I don't have now.
From 2008.
Anyhow, if the school's taking care of the fields and you're not paying the village, I don't know if you necessarily need, you know, two weeks worth of beer sales. Can you get by, I mean, can you live not having two weeks worth of beer sales?
It might not just be the sales. Do people bring coolers?
No, no. You don't allow carrying alcohol.
I mean, there has to be some compromise.
I thought the only time, like last year, they just said when the WIAA game was over, that Saturday, then you could start selling the beer.
That's correct.
Because they were done.
Yeah.
You know, so why can that not be-
It can't, I see. But, but you know, they said, well, they just said their tournaments in May, whatever.
Right.
The school has it through May. Their games can run into the first part of June, so.
Yeah.
I think there's gonna be some given type here that-
I think it just has to be the wording, that during a WIAA game, there is no beer sold.
That can be-
You know, that would be what we would have to word in the contract. And then, same thing with U Sports, we will not serve beer during a WIAA game, doesn't matter what the date is, as long as there's no game.
We pretty much adhere to that.
Yes, I know we did.
And is the beer thing a WIAA thing or is that a school district thing? I mean, I get it, probably WIAA, but do we have another layer? Is it the school district can't have alcohol?
It's on, it's on site for schools.
But it's not their property.
It's not their property, but if they're leasing it, that's why we put it in the contract. We make sure we have it, yeah.
They word it correctly.
Our biggest fear if they lease it for the year or whatever is what control do they have over it? Can they say, "You can't practice on the field until June 1st" or whatever? And that affects us because we start practicing when we can, like in the winter, so. And we're willing to chalk and maintain and do garbages, clean the bathrooms, whatever we need to do down there during our season. That's not a problem for us, but, you know, is the school gonna interfere with any of our scheduling if they have a lease?
And maybe, Russ, I turn to you, and again, Bob's not here. Could this be, yes, an agreement with the school district, but could it be almost a threefold agreement? School district, Hortonville U Sports and the village?
Yeah, that's possible if you can get everybody to agree to the terms and conditions, but yeah, you're right, it could be a multi-part.
Like, and I mean, that's how I, because that protects Hortonville U Sports. The school district feels that everyone has an equal hand in this, but the maintenance of the field, clearly they would have to pay more for a lease.
Yeah.
You know, because we're not maintaining the field, is that what you're saying? The school district is taking, taking care of maintaining those fields up to their standards?
Yeah.
Which relieves your guys-
See, one of the main issues we have is school district season starts so early that, you know, we have full-time staff, you know, parks, I mean, street department guys and parks.
And we agree.
And we got, we don't have enough staff. We shouldn't get people overpaying them to go up their top field to cut grass. The school needs to help out, bottom line.
Can you have a rep from each group draft the agreement together so not-
I think we need to agree what's best for us and then take them down.
And then sit down and negotiate.
And that's what we're doing right now, we're trying to find what's best for us.
If you could eliminate your guys doing the lawn, doing all that, that maintenance down there, is that what you're kinda-
Well, I want the school to take care of the fields, get them ready for ballgames. I want them to cut grass. U Sports, I don't know if it's all the coolers or whatever you got down there, but the electric bill's way north of $600 now per month. And I know you got beer sales, but it's, it's eating into my budget. That's a lot of money in electricity. So we got issues like that, you know. If we do lease it, then who pays the utility bills? Do we still lease it for X amount of money just so I can pay utility bills, it's always in our name? So that's something that we should think about.
Like, this party pays utility, this party does all the maintenance and forces providing the property.
You know, right now, the school district comes and takes a job and stuff from down there and takes it up to the commercial block, you know, and they've never reimbursed us for that. Little things like that, who's gonna pay for the chalk? Do we still keep it at $10,000 and still mandate that they take care of the fields?
Yes, yes.
You know, instead of us getting yelled at or, you know, the athletic director getting on my guys because they wanna call a game, you know, things like that need to stop as well. I don't like the AD yelling at my people.
No.
I won't tolerate that no more.
The greatest benefit is having them maintain it.
Exactly.
Yeah. They can maintain the fields. If they can, if they tear them up, then they've gotta pay to rebuild them. And as you know, it costs six grand to rebuild a field.
But if they're maintaining the fields, then this, if it's some sort of tri-fold agreement, then Hortonville U Sports is under the understanding when, like, when they're done at the end of the night, this is how we leave the fields. It's, you know, I mean, I think it's gonna have to be an effort from all three parties. Who carries liability down there?
Well, the village. See, if the school maintains the fields, you know, right now, they're supposed to be giving us $4,000. And maybe they give $4,000 to school, or $5,000 to make a half a lease or whatever, and then they can play their games for the rest of the year. The school still has the muller.
The utility?
Yes. Because we still need revenue to write the bills and pay the property insurance. The school will have to have another insurance for their games, but that's fine.
So we're in the red in this part, is what you're saying?
We are in the red and I'm not really subsidizing it. And Public Works just doesn't have any money, I can't fix my streets, but yet I gotta chalk through the fields for these people.
I mean, the former Public Works director's mentioned in some of that, I mean, so is this something, Carl, who do you want to sit down? Is this you as a village rep and we've, I mean, I think it's still gonna have to go through legal.
Oh, yeah. We're not ready to go there. We've got to get an agreement in place that, or parameters in place that we want.
No.
I don't think either, while we're gonna take care of U Sports, they're, you know, that we're the school, we're in a position to dictate what we should do here. We wanna, we wanna maybe what's best for us first. So let's, let's keep batting these ideas around.
So you, you would like to have no maintenance on the fields right now. Who takes care of cleaning the bathrooms and maintaining that building? Who does that right now?
I think, to be honest, I think U Sports should be doing that.
Who's doing that?
We do that, yeah.
Are they locked during certain, are they, are they only unlocked during games? Are they locked?
They're unlocked all the time.
Exactly. It's a public park.
Yes, it's a public park. So if it's leased, then are they allowed to lock those bathrooms?
You know, it doesn't happen. We've tried that, it doesn't happen.
Okay.
We've gone out there, I've gone out there after tournaments and, you know, like garbage bags, completely overflowing bottles, you know, spilled out on the ground and 10 feet away from tournaments. You know, little things like that that U Sports needs to step it up as well, so.
Can I add a couple of things?
Yes.
Just a couple of things for everyone to know here. I've been with U Sports for about four, six years, so I kinda, kinda know what's going on down there. Now, during the high school season, in the past, the high schools used all three of those diamonds till about 5 o'clock. So we've always worked, when we get our, our practices set, our teams are set in early March or whatnot, we typically get to go on those fields after 5:00. That's usually the time the school, well, in the past, that's how it's been. Okay, a lot of times, they don't use all the diamonds till 5:00. Most of the time, they're only using one. But, so that's kind of a hindrance to us. The other thing is the last four or five years, maybe not quite that long, three or four, we cut the grass down there on the outfield. The village just cuts the perimeter and anything outside of the field itself, so. We've taken it upon ourselves to maintain the grass on the outfield and such. So going forward, I guess that would be one thing to be brought up. Who's gonna maintain cutting of the grass? That be it the school, us, the village? I guess the other thing with the bathroom, it is considered a public park, is it not? Because when we held our last tournament, we, HYS, went and bought toilet roll dispensers and toilet paper because we were told the village had enough. Now, just from a perspective, I mean, it's a public park, you guys need to provide necessities down there for people to use the facility. We had, well, I don't know how much we spent, but we got cases of toilet paper down here now. Because we're running a tournament and the first, the first night, there's no toilet paper to be had, so.
I don't know nothing about that.
Well, it happens.
Somebody should have said something.
I think that those cautions, and I would agree, it's a public facility, should be borne by the village, but I think that doesn't enter into the price of the lease. The lease is for the land only for $10,000? That's what it is now? Am I correct?
Yes.
So any cost above and beyond that, maybe it's shared?
They're leasing the land, but here's my question. Now, I as a public citizen, when I call the village and say I'd like to rent Otto Miller Park, can I do that if they're leased out to the high school?
No, I don't think you can.
So it's not a public park? My kids have never played on it, well, they played one year, we go to Dale now.
I thought it was leased out once here a year or two ago.
You keep calling it a public park, but we still, it has to go through U Sports to rent it even in the summertime because they're, they have priority. So it's not like you go down there and pay.
Yeah, well, it is, it is public property that we know, but the lease is actually between the village in Hortonville and the high school. So I think, you know, if I lease, if that, if I lease property from Joe Blow, I'm completely liable for that. I have control over it, so whoever leases this should have control.
Exactly, like right now, if I call the village and said I wanted to rent out the park.
Which?
Otto Miller, at any park. I would assume that there's toilet paper, I would assume that there's all that in the bathroom, but that particular park is very unique because it's not like a-
It's a ballpark.
It's a ballpark. But let's say I wanted to rent the ballpark, I would then need to contact Hortonville U Sports or do I contact the high school, the village?
High school, probably, yeah.
In the future, but right now, you just said that scheduling goes, so that's kinda tricky too.
Some, well, not some. Like the, the fire department, do they go through you or through?
I don't believe so.
They can through us, they can through the village.
Well, I understand that once the season is done, you go back to the village.
Yes, yeah, always. We've never given the high school or U Sports the authority to rent that out. The village has always rented it out.
But they have the village and the high school.
And our games, yes, but then when there's not a game, then we can lease it. And I believe whoever handles that now, I'm not sure who handles it, if Nathan does?
Nathan does, yeah.
Okay, what you did is you, you had U Sports scheduled, you have the high school scheduled, and then you know, okay, it's free the last Saturday in July, so the fire department can rent it. That's what we have always done in the past.
But then who does the chopping? Who does the raking of the field? I mean, so let's say Hortonville U Sports or high school left it in a certain kind of condition and somebody, like fire department, and just to use that as an example, they go through there, who's, and it rained that April, who's chalking fields? Who's doing all that? Was that the village that went out and did that, Carl?
They always did that.
And you're looking to eliminate that, is what you're looking to do?
Yeah.
That's your $30,000 cost.
Yeah, yeah.
So then, do you say to someone renting it, for instance, the fire department, you have to do your own maintenance? You have to mark your own field?
Fire department doesn't pay anything anyways because they get waived, otherwise, yeah.
Well.
That's another can work. So, yeah, they, they do-
Well, that's another building that needs to be sold too, so.
So the only rental we, we might have one rental a year.
I think that's about it, outside of U Sports.
Yeah. And a lot of times, our landlords work with U Sports.
Right. I don't think anyone else rents-
Does it, does the lease need to be with the high school though? Is it something that we could lease? Blue are paying the $4,000, like, is that something we could lease?
Why would we lease it to you for four when we could do it for 10?
No, that's why I'm asking. Why, I'm not saying for-
Who uses it more?
The way these agreements are-
U Sports.
Peter, the way these agreements are, it was $10,000 from the school and $4,000 from U Sports.
I know that, I-
So, it was-
But what she's saying is can we lease it to them and they pay us four when we could lease it to the-
We could lease it on that.
I suppose we could, we could have the lease between anybody. I wouldn't recommend three-party though. I'd recommend one responsible party, whether it be U Sports or whether it be the high school, because then they can control the whole thing.
With a sublease.
Well, that's up to them.
But we'd have to, but if, I have a rental house and I have a very thick stipulation in there about subleasing, because I leased it out to someone I know who's in there, but if they leave and they sublease that property, I'd like a little control of who's in there, you know, I mean-
Well, they, they'd break that lease, wouldn't they?
No, well, yeah, at that point, but we need to put something in there about subleasing then, because that would be a sublease.
It's up to them.
And I'm not just saying $4,000, I'm just saying if we're gonna be paying this $4,000 anyway, why don't we split the 14 between the two parties or why don't, you know, U Sports pay, you know, the bulk of it and then the school? I don't know.
Well, let's go back to what you said before, we had some utility expense there. We will still have, you know, if it's considered a public property and we must maintain the bathrooms, we'd have some, you know, we'd have to work that out, but we'd have some expense there too, so. You know, we can work out a number, but I, my firm belief is that I would rather have just one party lease it and then you would have the right to work with, or they would have the right to work with you on using the facility for a quiet square you guys establish.
See, I think it makes, nothing against U Sports, it makes it cleaner to have the school do it because they have the money and the power. And then all we have to do is make sure there's a guarantee that they're protected.
Right.
We only need a couple of stipulations. They can use the fields up and they can sell beer after WIAA's done or whatever.
But if a public person contacts the school and says I'd like to rent that field out or the fire department or whomever, then they should be able to do that through the school then, correct? Not the village? Because we've, we've relinquished the renting authority on that part. Does that sound right, Russ? You just kinda-
We're just thinking as you're talking and just kinda picturing how that might work.
I don't wanna, I don't want there to be hard feelings. There's absolutely, there was no ill intent and then rumors started about this guy sold for a dollar. I've got enough emails and enough calls about it. I don't want any hard feelings. And we've got, Hortonville is a great organization, the school district, great, you know, great school district and village. I think all three parties can sit down and figure this out. There's no hard, there's, there's no reason for somebody to feel shunned.
Why are we doing a year lease to the school when they've only had April 1st and May 31st before? Correct?
Why are we, why would we do a whole year so we can take care of it?
Is that what you said, to do a maintain lease?
Yeah, I mean, see, that's another thing. I, we have, these fields have to be taken year, year round. You know, I see them working on the football field year round. You know, we have to work on these fields year round. It's not, it costs money to take care of these fields year round. That's why we need to do a year, or a 10-year lease, whatever, as long as they're taken care of.
I like the idea of-
We have to-
Taking care of those fields. I love the idea of just, that not being on your shoulders.
And then if they got any complaints, they can complain to themselves.
I just think, I know that this is a, this, this really spreads you thin during that time of year and especially when it's WIAA standards and field condition is a matter of opinion.
Is it just the fields, or how about outside the fences?
It's everything.
It's everything that would.
Yeah, I just take my last word, U-S, I've got summer help, which they're down after this week now, for the whole rest of the year, you know, we've got to pay full-time guys that do not only go up there and take care of this place for the rest of the year.
Yeah, and it's on your guys.
You've got stray weeds, you've got to do this, so, you know, there's projects that we need to do on mainstream, there's projects we need to do on other parks, but we're taking care of this field year-round, and getting a hard time because we charge, and only charge ten thousand for it. Ten thousand is nothing. So, what I'm looking for is whoever we lease it to, they need to pick up the majority of the responsibility for everyone's using it.
No offense on Hortonville U-Sports, would, but would the high school have more, more of that, that opportunity to maintain those fields, or Hortonville U-Sports? I don't, there's nobody here from the school, as far as I know, so that's why I'm, who has the ability to, to maintain those fields up to the W.I.A. standards?
My concern would be your volunteers. That would be.
It wouldn't be volunteers.
Pardon me?
It wouldn't be volunteers.
But your board is all volunteer, and are you gonna, would you be able to even consider doing that?
We're doing it now, then we do it on the weekends, when we, we chalk the fields all weekend, that's totally all volunteer. We have some paid staff that come in and do it, um, from Friday to Sunday, that's our job, too.
I'm just worried more about the school, if they've got their certain standards, you know, and then that's on your shoulders.
No, we, we have to put it in the contract for the school, that they have to do their own fields for their games, because they are very demanding about how they are done. So, it has to be during that time of year, it is going to have to be for sure. Then if U-Sports wanted to do it the remainder, we could put it in their contract. Do you know what I'm saying? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
It relinquishes all.
During school games, W.I.A. games, or practices, or whatever, the school maintains it, that has to be written in their contract.
One, one thing we have to be aware of is, U-Sports put a lot of money into these fields, and they're, they're very expensive fields, they're nice fields, we get a lot of compliments from all over, and you have groups that want to come in there and practice on them when they're not ready, and they, I'm talking about the school, and if they trash those fields, you know, you could be talking six thousand dollars worth of damage to a field, easily, and so, they're going to be responsible for the upkeep of those fields to the standards they're set, not just keeping them ready for the games.
But then the rest of the year, like, June, July, August, like, right now, U-Sports would take over, is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah. We'd like to.
I, I want to think, uh, if you just take a look down at that part, over the last five or six years, we've put a lot of stuff into that part, not just the western east diamond, two new scoreboards, batting cage turf, frame on the cage, concrete underneath, the school hasn't added one penny down there.
Hortonville U-Sports, because I was in Hortonville U-Sports many years ago with my kids, and Hortonville U-Sports has always donated time, money, projects, always. They have a lot into that part.
They love, love what they're.
Throughout all the years.
I'm willing to buy that.
That's why they should get less.
Yeah, I don't want to.
Because of what they donate.
They should get what?
Less, they should pay less for.
They put more towards the field.
Maybe, maybe they should be the leaseholder.
Actually, they don't have to pay anything, because they put everything back into the field.
Yes, they do.
That always happens.
But even though it says four thousand on, on here, we really haven't demanded the money because of everything they've played.
They go above and beyond.
Yeah, they, they've never paid us the four thousand, because they've always spent more than that.
Yes, they have.
But if they're going to be in charge of the school, they're gonna, I have no problem with them being the leaseholders, to be honest. I'd actually prefer.
I agree, they can deal with the high school.
Well, the high school, yeah, I mean, I, no offense, but I wish somebody was here to talk about this, on the school, because this was the, why we set up this committee, the whole, make it more of an open dialogue, and I've been contacted by some school board members, and I invited them here tonight, and they're not here, so.
You can contact a lot.
I do.
My God.
I do.
I've never.
You can.
I've ruled for that.
Emails.
I think we're doing, we're getting like that, we have to school. Personally, I would think the school should be doing it, because if you don't get it exactly right, I'm, U-Sports is going to hear from it, just like the village has, you know.
Yeah.
I still think the school should maintain the fields during their season.
Yeah, because they have to answer to the other team, and the W.I.A., and everybody, so that pressure should.
I think we can figure something out.
Definitely.
Are you happy for that? I think we need to work with U-Sports first.
Yes.
Get on board there, and, um, they can be the primary managers of that.
I think additionally, though, it should be all three parties, you know, so, because we don't have anybody from the school here, so, that, that way, they can at least get their word in.
She's invited school board members.
I know, they're not here.
They're not here.
They show no interest.
Well, they're interested, they're interested, the problem, maybe this didn't work out scheduling-wise. I don't want to make anyone feel any, everyone has a, has a share in this, and I think maybe we need to gather. I don't want, I think it's a good way to start out the process, is to, can everybody on the same page? Hortonville U-Sports has put a ton into those fields, the high school, what other alternatives do they have? They've got commercial club, and not that I want to steer them in that direction, but, I mean, Hortonville U-Sports has put so much into these fields, I think, yes, they're a stakeholder, but I think the high school's also, or the, the school district's a stakeholder as well, and I think we should just, I think all three parties should be involved in the discussion of where to go with this.
See, what I heard also, I don't know, because we heard that our last meeting was a lack of communication with the school. I mean, if we, say, we're going to set down these agreements, we need somebody here from U-Sports, from the school, and the village to put this together, so there's communication.
If they don't show up for it then, it's not, it's not our problem, communication, right?
So, they should be formally notified.
Who's spearheading this?
This is going to be kind of a village moderator?
Yeah, between the two of you.
Ross has been overgraded, by the way.
Listen, I, I just have to tell you, I've never sat next to one of the best negotiators in my life, this gentleman right here, on a lease contract. This guy's got a lot of experience, he's your number one man.
Carl, is that comfortable for you? I mean, I know that this has been a lot on your shoulders, maintaining these fields, does this sound like, this, what you planned on coming out of this meeting, you planned on coming out of here with at least something?
I wanted to, A, get a feel from the board, get a feel from U-Sports, and get a feel from the school. I just want to state my position, is I can't, Public Works cannot afford to subsidize the school district anymore.
So, you're the one who's.
It's not fair to the Hortonville taxpayers.
Yeah, you're the one in, day in and day out, we work twice a month. Does that sound fair?
Yep, that's, we've been willing to do that all along.
But I got a question, once our season is done at the end of July, I mean, is the thought is that whoever's going to be the primary, going to take care of the facility from January one to December thirty-first, is that the idea?
Somebody's going to have to do it, you know, we're all.
Right, when it's done. That would be something with the negotiations with all three parts.
The village can still come in when it rises and pull meters, stuff like that.
Yeah, maybe that stuff we wouldn't be, like.
Yeah.
Be honest, we should find a way to get that contract outmowing, you know, stuff, little things like that. U-Sports, like I said, they, they do a great job taking care of the infield during the, during their season. Uh, there's still a lot of, a lot of outside perimeter mowing, you know, it takes a day and a half to mow that property, so, um, you know, maybe we can find ways to contract out the major parts of it, you know, the village take care of this and that, and it, we're, we're going to have to sit down and work through it, but anything like that you can think of, just write it down, and get to the meeting.
Okay.
And we'll try, I know Craig travels a lot, I mean.
He does.
Yeah.
But he doesn't necessarily have to.
Yeah.
Because we're officers, too, so at least two officers probably for us.
I think what we need to do is do what's best for U-Sports and the village and the school, but it, it, there can be no longer be any one-sided agreement, so.
But to be fair, like we talked about, since they've been in the agreement for this long, to have him at the table.
Oh, yeah, we'll have him at the table, yeah. Well, can, let me get your phone on, let's up, we'll leave.
Sure.
And we'll reach out to Andy, I'm sure they're busy, they got a lot going on, they might be getting the fields ready, you know, it's.
Tomorrow's dedication, yeah.
So, that's probably why they weren't here, but they're interested, and I, I know, it's not, we're not going to sit there and drive home over a barrel, but we'll do what we have to do, take care of those Hortonville citizens first.
And do you, right, there's how many communities that pay into taxes for the school district? We're one municipality.
So, and I can understand school personnel being busy, not being here, but when you said you had board members that contacted you and you invited them here, you would have thought at least one or two of them would have showed up.
Two board members, yep.
Well, we'll try, try them again, I guess. I think, you know, I think we kind of got our march orders.
I think being a home board gives me a little more assessment.
When are you mostly available?
One actually works.
Times like this?
Yeah, yeah, that would be fine. Is that, if that works for you.
Maybe we should set something up for. How's next week look for you?
I'm hoping.
Um, I know Thursday we have a.
What about next Wednesday?
Yeah, Wednesday would be fine.
Not going to work?
Yeah.
How, how early can you get here? Because it, it might be move us to, to school district employees, if we can do it at three to three-thirty, if that's possible.
Tuesday would be better.
Tuesdays would be work better.
I can make three-thirty.
On Tuesday?[1719.82]